All right, we're going to call the meeting to order for tonight, Tuesday, December 12, 2017. Start off by reading the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students through school, family, and community partnerships. We provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. We'll call Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Larney.
All righty, so hold on, I gotta get... Switch again, it's always easier this one. We're gonna do this going forward.
I like it the way you take it.
Yes, it's so much better. Ah, hold on, let's go to the correspondence. Which I believe is... We don't have any correspondence. We also have absolutely nothing from me. This movie, this meeting is going swimmingly right now, this is the best. All right, on to Ingrid.
You're making it up here to tardiness.
All right. So tonight, we are starting with Lisa Altham Hickey, who is here to give a presentation of the district MCAS results from the 2017 spring tests.
(interviewing) ...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... However, there are accommodations for students who actually are on 504s and IEPs that we can make that accommodation that they can receive a paper-based test. And that is continuing moving forward actually as we go through this year as well. There's four new categories for scoring, and I'm going to review that on a later date. The new standards for meeting expectations are far more rigorous than the standards that we had actually before and prior on the MCAS. So reaching the proficiency level on the legacy MCAS was a little bit, I wouldn't say easier, but you know what, as we went through that test on the legacy, that students did very well and scored in those two top categories. And as we move into a new test, students are not going to actually reach those two top categories as quickly because this test is far more rigorous than it has been in the past. The goal is to set high expectations for our students to measure grade level expectations. Roughly half of Massachusetts students in grades three through eight are already scoring in the meeting expectations category. However, there are students that scored in the partially meeting expectations or not meeting expectations. If a child scored in one of those categories, it's important to know that they didn't learn any less than any other child that was taught. It's just a different way of measuring expectations. I think it's important to know that this is one way to measure a child's growth. We have multiple ways that we measure student learning throughout the school year, and this is one way to look at it. So there's four new scoring categories for the new MCAS. They are exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And the scaled score range for exceeding expectations is 530 to 560. A student who performed at this level exceeded grade level expectations by demonstrating mastery of the subject matter. Meeting expectations, a student who performed at this level met grade level expectations and is academically on track to succeed in the current grade level in this subject area. Partially meeting expectations, the scaled score was 470 to 500. A student who performed at this level partially met grade level expectations in the subject. The school, in consultation with the student's parent/guardian, should consider whether the student needs additional academic assistance to succeed in this subject. And not meeting expectations, 440 to 470. A student who performed at this level did not meet grade level expectations in this subject. The school, in consultation with the student's parent/guardian, should determine the coordinated academic assistance and additional instruction the students need to succeed. So moving on, we're going to start with English Language Arts. So they had lots of different types of questions actually moving on to the English Language Arts test. They had multiple choice questions. Students select the correct answers from among several options. This is something that they're, I think that they're very familiar with, and something that they did do actually on the legacy MCAS test. Technology-enhanced questions, this is something that's different. This is something that they didn't experience, that we actually had some training for the students prior to them taking it, and practiced that a little bit moving into last year, and then we continue those skills actually daily now. Students taking the computer-based test questions using technology, a drag-and-drop or a hotspot. So some of the things the students might have to do is they might have a bank of basically answers, and they might need to actually take those answers and actually drag and drop them into two categories based on a reading selection that they read and based on what the question might say. So that's one of the examples of a technology-enhanced question. Short response, students construct a short written response approximately the length of a paragraph. So writing a paragraph is not different for our students. However, taking that paragraph actually and typing that paragraph is a lot different than taking a pencil and a piece of paper and writing that. And I think that's something that, you know what, when we look at, you know what, our results and things, that's something that we have to keep in mind. Our narrative essay, students write an essay in response to a text that they have read. Again, you're doing all of that now basically from the top of your head. There are graphic organizers, it's teaching the kids how to pull those graphic organizers down, use that, and then take that information, and then type that into basically the computer. Text-based essays, students write an essay in response to texts that they have read. And all those fall into the different standards for English Language Arts actually underneath that. This is an overview of each grade level, the types of questions, the number of questions that the students had this year, and the points that were associated for them. So for example, in grade three, they had 18 multiple choice questions, they were worth one point each. They had multiple choice questions basically, and those, they were two points each, they had short responses. In third grade, they had one. The number of essays includes a narrative or text base that was two, and the number of testing sessions was three shorter sessions. And as you see, as you can go along, basically, that gets a little bit more difficult, and sometimes actually the testing sessions get much longer. So in sixth grade, the students are having 18 questions, they're having four two-point questions, they're not having any short response questions, but they're having three narrative essays, and their sessions are much longer. So I'm going to go over each grade level on how each grade level did. And if you can see basically, to the right is a nice bar graph that kind of visually shows how we did compared to how the state did. So if you look at this, basically, we have the exceeding expectations, the number of students included in that was 12. As a school, we scored 9 percent, the state court scored 8 percent. Meeting expectations, the number of students, 70 students met expectations, and then 51 percent of our students scored in that category, and the state scored 39 percent. Partially meeting expectations, 53 students, 38 percent, the state was 42 percent. Not meeting expectations, 3 percent, the school was, I mean, three students, the school was 2 percent, and the state was 10 percent. So if you look at that, we had basically 16 percent of our students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations category level, whereas only 47 percent of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding expectations. And this is the first time our third graders actually took this test. So we were very pleased with these results. Obviously, there's always areas to prove, and I'll go through some of the areas that we need to do, but they did well for the first time. Grade four, exceeding expectations, 15 students, 14 percent. Meeting expectations, 63 students, 58 percent, compared to the state was 41 percent. Partially meeting expectations, 27 students, 25 percent, compared to the state was 42 percent. Not meeting expectations, three students, 3 percent, compared to the state which was 10 percent. 72 percent of the students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 48 percent of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding expectations. So again, we were very impressed, you know, that our students actually did that well. I think the bar graphs actually show, you know, how well that we did compared to the In grade five, three students scored in the exceeding expectations, 2 percent, the state was higher than us in that category, 6 percent. Meeting expectations was 59 percent, which was 48 percent of our students, the state scored 43. Partially meeting expectations was 57 students, 47 percent of the school, and 42 in the state, and not meeting expectations, three students, 2 percent, compared to the state at 10 percent. 50 percent of the students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 49 of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding levels. Grade six, ELA, exceeding, six students, 5 percent of the school scored in the exceeding expectations. Meeting expectations, 81 students, 69 percent, compared to the state of only 43 percent. Partially meeting expectations, 29 students, 25 percent of the school, where the state had 39 percent. Not meeting expectations, one student, 1 percent, and 10 percent in the state. 74 percent of our students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 50 percent of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding levels for ELA. As a district, I kind of identified some strengths and focus areas for us to, you know, take this baseline and where do we go from here, and working with our teachers in data meetings. As a district, selective topics, types of questions on the next generation MCAS are a strength in grades four and five with an average of 82 percent. As a district, the reading anchor standard craft and structure has proven to be a strength in grades three, four, and five with an average of 87 percent. Key ideas and details is a strength in grades five and six with an average of 87 percent. And sometimes, as we go through the years, it's important to know that the standards change, obviously. Some of the standards in sixth grade are different than the standards in the younger grades. So that's sometimes why you don't see, you know, all the grades come behind there. As a district, the vocabulary acquisition and the use under the language anchors standard also proved to be a strength across all grade levels with an average of 87 percent. As a district, a continued area of focus for all grade levels will be answering constructive responses and essay questions. We will also focus on the writing anchor standard. As a district, we'll also focus on typing stamina, typing on demand, and increasing keyboarding skills in the classroom. Those are all components that actually come to the next generation MCAS, and that's something that we're implementing and we're doing basically on a daily basis. We have a lot more Chromebooks that we have purchased. Robyn Cusery, the technology integration specialist, this year actually did eight weeks at the beginning of the school year to work on all these types of skills, and then those teachers are taking that to the next level. So the other thing to keep in mind is that we have an implementation of a new writing program this year, Lucy Calkins. So I think that implementation of the new writing program is really going to help us in some of these writing areas where we need some improvement on. Types of math questions. So they have multiple choice questions for math, students select the correct answers from among several options. Students do get a scrap piece of paper, I should let you know that. They can only have one piece of scrap paper at a time, then the teacher needs to collect that, and then basically they can get another piece. But they can have that option of having that piece of paper and pencil to figure out their, obviously, their work, and then they can select the response. Multiple select, students select more than one answer from among several options. So that's something a little bit different for our kids, is that, you know what, there's more than one answer here, so what are the two or three answers that I'm going to choose actually to make sure that this answer is correct? Short answer, fill in the blank, students construct a short response, typically a word or a number. So students are now actually basically on the Chromebook again, and they're actually typing words or numbers that actually answer the question. Technology enhanced, students are answering questions using technology such as a drag-and-drop or a hotspot on the computer-based test only. So again, students might have to drag and drop, or they might have to do a line plot, okay? So something of that nature, that's very different when you're actually having to plot something for the students and where that's going to be. Open response, students write a response to a multi-part item that includes answers and explanations. So students are used to that, but again, taking that information and now typing all of that is much different. This is the design of the math test by grade level. There was 34 one-point questions, which included multiple choice, multiple select, short answer, fill in the blank, or technology enhanced. The number of two-point questions was two, includes multiple choice, multiple select, answer fill in the blank. Number of four-point questions for third grade, none. Number of responses, four. And then it mirrors that in fourth grade, it mirrors that in fifth grade, and then you'll see in sixth grade that changes. And this is our mathematics results by grade level. So in third grade, exceeding expectations, we had nine students, 7 percent, and 7 percent at the state. Meeting expectations, we had 85 students, 62 percent at the school level and 42 percent at the state. Partially meeting expectations, we had 40 students, 29 percent, and 38 percent at the state level. Not meeting expectations, two students, 1 percent, compared to the state had 13 percent. 69 percent of the students in Norfolk scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, where only 49 percent of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding. So for third grade, we were very proud of them. Again, you know what, for first-time test and on the computer. Grade four, exceeding expectations, 15 percent of the students, 14 percent in the school side, only 6 percent on the state side. Meeting expectations, 73 students, 67 percent, compared to the state at 43 percent. Partially meeting expectations, we had 16 students, 15 percent of our school, and 39 percent at the state level. Not meeting expectations, five students, 5 percent, 13 percent at the state level. 81 percent of our students in grade four scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, where only 49 percent of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding. They did very well, that fourth grade class. Grade five, mathematics, 20 students scored in the exceeding expectations, 16 percent of the school population, and only 7 percent in the state. Meeting expectations, 63 students scored meeting expectations, 52 percent at the school level, 39 percent at the state level. Partially meeting expectations, 35 students, 29 percent at the school level, 44 percent at the state level. Not meeting expectations, 4 percent of our students, 3 percent at the school, and 10 percent at the state. 68 percent of our students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, where only 46 percent of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding levels. Grade six, exceeding expectations, 21 students scored in exceeding expectations, 18 percent at the school level, 7 percent at the state level. Meeting expectations, we had 75 students, 64 percent, and 42 percent at the state. Partially meeting expectations, 21 students, 18 percent at the school level and 39 percent at the state. Not meeting expectations, one student, 1 percent, compared to the state at 11 percent. 82 percent of our students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, where only 49 percent of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding. So again, we did, we did very well, and we were very pleased, and you know what, we certainly let our teachers know, you know, what a great job they did in preparing for a brand-new test. There was a lot of things to encompass last year. 2017 mathematics, the strengths and focus areas. As a district, selective responses, types of questions on the next generation MCAS are a strength across all grade levels. We had an average of 77 percent correct. As a district, the geometry standard for grades four was 87 percent. In grade five, 84 percent was a strength. This is an area that we need to work on in grades three and six. As a district, the statistics and probability in grade six has proven to be a strength, was 83 percent correct. As a district, a continued area of focus for all grade levels will be answering constructive response and short answer questions. And additionally, we'll also focus on measurement and data on all grade levels. The math committee is currently reviewing the state standards and the current curriculum materials we use to teach the students. They'll be making recommendations to the school committee with their findings, and some of this information obviously is shared with Dr. Kelly and the committee moving forward, are, you know what, this is what the state, you know, is looking for, this is the types of questions that we're seeing on tests. Is there any other materials that can kind of support, you know, what we're seeing moving Science and technology was the legacy test. So science and technology is not yet on the computer. So, and it was the old standards. Right now, we're actually making that change over to the new next generation NGSS standards right now, and the students are actually being taught that. But right now, they have not made that, that made that change over yet. So I just want everyone to know that the fifth-grade students took paper and pencil for this. We were asked to actually pilot the next generation NGSS test, so our students did pilot it, but they will not release any information from that pilot that we took for fifth grade. But it's always good to have the kids try it on. So, that being said, in science, we had, so we're going back to the old categories. We had 33 students score 27 percent in science and technology compared to the state at 17 percent. We had 45 students, 37 percent of the school, and 29 at the state. We had 39 students in grade five score 32 percent at the school level, 39 percent at the state level. We had four students in the warning failing, the warning failing category at 4 percent, where the state was at 15 percent. These are the old standards, like I just said, we piloted that next generation test with no results. Questions for 2018 will only be used in the old and new NGSS. The crosswalk is this year. In 2019, all the NGSS standards will most likely be in a format on computer. So most likely, we're looking at old tests again this year on paper. So one of the areas that was really important is to prepare our students basically, you know what, and give them practice tests before they actually hit the, you know what, the real test. And I wanted to show you, basically, I gave you the website for you to actually go on and peruse, but I was going to bring you to that website to kind of show you some of the different types of questions and how we prepared the students with student tutorials and things of that nature. So there's a test nav student tutorial that we trained the teachers on, that the teachers use with the kids to actually practice, you know, when they encounter these tests, how do I do a drag-and-drop? How do I type in this box, you know? How do I use some of the different types of resources? So hopefully... Trish would say before. Try it a different way, I'll give you one second. I had to have Trish Kelly come tonight because there's a way to present this so that I can read all my notes down here. And they did some finagling behind this, and I don't know why my house can't.
Lisa, while you're working to bring that up, does anybody have any questions on the information presented so far about the new next generation MCAS tests?
Duration of the test for all grades the same?
No.
It's a little longer in sixth grade.
It's a little bit longer as they go up, fall in the grades. So when the, for example, sixth grade, they only have two sessions. So those sessions are much longer than the third-grade students who are taking, you know...
Three shorter sessions.
Yeah.
If you can't get it to work, it's okay, Lisa. They can try the link and take a look.
I don't know how to say...
Not a question, but more so a comment. As we've come to expect, I mean, outstanding results, I mean, particularly what you said at the beginning, where this is the first time taking this particular version, that's really impressive.
We were very, very pleased, very pleased.
Should be.
Yeah. There was a lot of work that put into the behind scenes and actually training teachers because this is something new for teachers as well, and then the teachers, you know, are practicing with kids. But we were very happy too, and I think that the more that we actually integrate technology on a daily basis with our students, the better off that we're going to be. I mean, our teachers really in sixth grade now are like begging me to have one-to-ones at this point in time, which is a great thing. They're all using Google Classroom, you know, basically, they're not printing anything more, they're interacting, the students and the teachers, and you know what, all of their, you know what, written pieces now are on the computer, which is actually mirroring what we're doing here right now. So, you know, the teachers are providing feedback, the kids are going back and making those changes. So, you know what, we're really, you know, I think we're in a good spot, and I think as we go on, we're only going to see our results increase even better. But we agree, you know what, I mean, it's hard to tell when you're trying on a brand-new test, and we were very pleased with all the students, so something to celebrate here. So a lot of hard work from our teachers and our students, so...
Yeah, no, congratulations to everyone. Very nice job.
I'm sorry that you can't, I can't do this because I'm not as tech savvy as everybody else. But it is a great website where you can actually go on, and you can go basically, and they have practice questions at each grade level that you can actually see, and you'll actually be able to see. I wanted to kind of show you some of the knowledge and questions and what the kids had to do and things of that nature. So I apologize, but I had Trish here a little while ago, and they set something up different for me. I think I could...
We should have had Jeff Curry, we could have had Owen stay, he could probably...
He could probably bring it right up.
We need a kid to do this, so...
That's all right.
It's fine, we can...
And as Lisa said, you really can't compare this year's results to the last year's results because they're totally different tests. But content-wise, in the last several years, we have been focusing on the written language strand, and answering short answer and long answer and essay questions has been a challenge, which is why we did that curriculum review and implemented a new writing program this year. So there is some consistency, you know, that the writing is still a challenge, and I think it was further impacted by the fact that they were typing. So those two things are areas of focus for us. All right. So what we could do, do we want to move on to the next agenda item and then... And then if, if Lisa can...
We'll go ahead and move this on. We can look at that separately.
Okay. All right, so while they work on that, and if she is able to bring it up, I'll, I'll stop, but we'll move on to the quarterly bullying report. So as per the school committee policy, every quarter, I report to you the number of bullying and discipline incidences that were reported and investigated. This quarter, we have seen an increase in the number of reports made at both schools. We had, at the H.L. Day, there were four discipline issues and reports regarding bullying behavior. At the time that I submitted this, three had been fully investigated, two involved best complaints, and one involved a school-based situation. At the conclusion of the investigations, at that level, it was determined that they were really more conflicts between students or unkind behavior, but not really bullying. The, the fourth incident was still being investigated at the time I submitted this. At the Freeman Kennedy this quarter, there were ten discipline reports or incidents regarding, reports regarding bullying. They were also fully investigated. Nine of the incidents were determined not to meet the criteria for bullying, and there was disciplinary action taken, and the final investigation at the Freeman was still ongoing, and they were gathering information from students. So in terms of the increase, this is something that, you know, we're, obviously, we're concerned about. We do have anti-bullying programs, we have open circle, we have Mark lessons, so we're monitoring and making sure that those programs are in place. We're not the only district right now. I have been at several meetings recently, and across the state, districts are seeing an increase in unkind behavior, name-calling, this kind of inappropriate conduct on students, and, and whether it's related to what's going on, you know, across the country right now, I'm not sure, but there's a lot of districts that are seeing an increase in, in reports and incidents. So we are monitoring that, we are going to talk about that in our strategic plan, we are looking at additional resources for anti-bullying curriculum at the grades three to six. We think, we, at this time feel, we need to supplement some of what we're doing there. But again, most of the incidences were more inappropriate behavior, single, so bullying has to be a pattern of persistent behavior over time with a power differential. So it could also be that more things are being reported that are single incidents that by policy, we will trigger an investigation. But we are monitoring it and, you know, working on continuing to support our students in the social-emotional learning realm. Any questions, comments, thoughts on that?
No.
All right, the next thing is to revoke the final 2018 budget. So typically, at our first meeting in August, when we do the budget development, we put placeholders in for hiring salaries. So we typically revoke the budget once we have actual salaries and all the hiring is done. This year, we delayed the vote because we had requested an additional appropriation from the town of Norfolk at the town, at the Fall Town Meeting, and that was to offset some of the additional staffing positions that we had to add after the budget cycle over the summer to meet the needs of some of our students. So Norfolk did have the public town meeting on December fifteenth, and they did vote to appropriate an additional $67,806 to the Norfolk Elementary School. So included in your packet, you have the revised budget that just has all the actual salaries plus this additional appropriation that was used to fund two assistant teachers for special education and to offset the cost of a teaching position. So I would just need a motion from the committee to revoke the final budget.
Do we have a motion on that?
I make a motion that we revoke the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, nothing.
Great.
The one question I had, I know when Todd made the presentation last week, we had not included any of this money, correct?
We had not included that, right. And he's going to come to the January meeting and do his quarterly budget update, so this will be included in the next presentation.
All right, so that helps a little bit.
Yep, it does. All right, the next thing is the strategic plan draft. So we have been working really hard with our strategic planning committee, and we've been working probably over the last several months, and I've brought to you different pieces that the committee has worked on at, at prior meetings. So the first thing that we did was to review a lot of outside sources of data. We looked at outside program audits and reviews, we looked at the results of the parent community surveys, focus group data, MCAS data, district baselines, benchmark report. And based on all of the data, the strategic planning committee did a SWOT analysis. So we looked at what are the strengths of the district, what are the areas of weakness, where do we have opportunities, and what are some of the threats that we have to consider. Once we completed the SWOT, which I brought to you, I think, in June, we used the SWOT to formulate four focus areas and goals for the new strategic plan, and the committee reviewed those and, and voted to approve the new goals back in June. After that, once we had all the goals, we took a look at the SWOT analysis and our, in our long-term goal, and we brainstormed lists of action steps, what we needed to do to move the district forward in order to meet the goals by the end of the new strategic plan, which will be 2021. The next phase, once we took all the action steps, was we paced them. We used an effort, resource demand grid, so we took a look at each action step, thought about what the professional development requires would be, requirements would be for implementation, what the resource demand on the district would be, what the impact would be on student learning and achievement, and based on those criteria, we paced all the action steps over the three phases of the new plan. So what you have in front of you is first, a list of the membership of the committee. We had great representation, we had teachers, we had paraprofessional staff members, we had administrators, and we did have two parent representatives on the strategic planning committee. And then behind it, you have a draft of the strategic plan overview. So it includes our new vision statement, our theory of action, the four major goals that you approved, and the goals, you know, to sort of summarize, we have a goal around community, school, climate, and culture. There's a goal around personalizing the curriculum. There's a goal around professional learning, and then there's a goal around communication. And then behind that, you'll see the strategic initiatives that we feel need to be implemented in order to meet the goals. So in phase one, under the school climate, culture goal, we're recommending that we investigate new social-emotional learning and anti-bullying curriculums for grades three to six, which relates to what we just discussed earlier. We also feel that we need to evaluate the needs and resources for the SAC program, our after-care program, to continue to promote safe school climate and culture in the after-care program. And we also would like to do some community outreach to look at what are some of the needs and demands families are facing and, and what our staff is facing to develop an action plan for support. So we get, we get a lot of questions from the community or from parents over different, different issues, whether it's how to help their child navigate digital citizenship, things like that. We want to gather that data so we can have a more thorough plan for how we provide resources and support. Under the curriculum initiative in phase one, we are conducting a review of the current mathematics program. We are implementing a new technology curriculum, and that includes a lot more opportunities for engineering design and Makerspace activities, like you had the chance to tour our Makerspace a few weeks ago. We are updating the written publication of the science curriculum so that it incorporates the next-generation science standards. And we are also continuing to work on establishing the proficiency benchmarks and assessment tools that we're using to measure that will align with the new report cards. So we've really done a lot of that work for K to three, but next year, we're rolling out the new report cards for to six. The professional development, I'm not going to go through each of those items, but they are designed to support the curriculum initiatives and the, um, school climate initiatives. So you'll see things like training on standards-based report cards for teachers, training to support the implementation of the new math program, training on any new anti-bullying Mark program. Under the communication goal, we will be implementing the new report cards at all grades, K to six, next year. We are looking to develop tools and structures for better sharing information and communication about students' instructional needs as they go through the grades, so from teacher to teacher, across grade levels. We also want to develop a comprehensive communication strategy and plan for the district that would include whether or not we're going to pursue a presence on social media, developing a new web platform, and how communication is sent to parents and, and how we solicit feedback, feedback back. And the other thing that we'll be looking at is developing a new logo and consistent branding for the district as part of the plan. So those are the phase one initiatives. Phase two, we'll be implementing our new social-emotional learning curriculum and, as well as the family-staff support plan under the climate goal. We'll also be looking at developing partnerships with some outside agencies to bring resources and expertise into the school, so local businesses, the senior center, local private schools, things like that. We'll, in the curriculum area, we'll be implementing the new math program, we'll be incorporating STEAM activities, so again, more of that design-engineering activities into the science curriculum. We're going to be working on streamlining and developing a consistent model for RTI, which is our Response to Intervention Program, where we monitor and provide additional instruction and resources to kids that are struggling to meet the grade-level expectations. So we want better, more consistent tools for progress monitoring. We will be streamlining the district assessment plan and looking at more project-based and performance-based learning assessments for social studies and science, and integrating and investigating new technology resources for enrichment and, and extension of learning for students. And, and again, some students require remediation, some students have mastered the content and need opportunities to explore it at a deeper level. The professional development programming will support the new curriculum initiatives. And then under the communication goal, we intend to have a brand-new website. So our goal in phase two is going to be to publish digital information about all our school programs and our curriculum and resources, and to expand and host more curriculum-based family nights at both schools.
What is the platform for the website?
It's, they're researching it right now. We're looking at several different options to find out. The current website that we have is a free resource, but it's not as robust as what other districts are using, so we are in, in the process of looking at what we'd like to use. And actually, we are looking at that with KP. They're looking as well.
Very good.
They told us they were interested in, in the research that we were conducting, so... Huh?
I can't even hear you, and I'm sitting right here, so...
Yeah, you might have to come back to the microphone.
People can't hear you, that's interesting. Brand-new platform, it was already, it was already updated. Actually, we had a letter that was just sent out to the Attorney General's office to notify and open the website.
Oh, okay, so maybe they're sharing that information. I know all four tech directors are in discussions about it. For phase three, under the school climate goal, we'll be reevaluating district policies and procedures for student discipline and making revisions based on best practice and new research. We'd like to expand the use of peer mentors and student leadership programs, implement a parent guardian involvement engagement plan, and expand opportunities for civic responsibility and experiences in the curriculum for students. Under the curriculum, we will be writing the math curriculum in phase three. We will be conducting a review of the district's social studies curriculum at that time, implementing our new RTI protocols and models, and we would like to investigate non-traditional opportunities for foreign language instruction at that, at that time. And also moving towards more student-led goal, goal-setting and student-led conferencing at the upper grades. The professional development, again, aligns with the curriculum and the culture initiatives. And then under the communication, we'll be reevaluating all of our emerg, emergency communication systems, and also working on structures for continuing the work that we've been doing this year with the Special Ed Steering Committee in the curriculum realm to make sure that our curriculum is well-aligned and articulated going from pre-K through 12. So those are our primary goals. So what I would like to have is, and I included in your packet the SWOT, so you can see what the goals and action steps are based on. And then the next step, if the school committee votes to approve the draft strategic plan, then we will do actual action planning for each of those strategic initiatives that are in phase one. So you can see, this was the strategic action plan for the development of the new strategic plan, but it's just a model. That's what we'll move on to once you approve the major initiatives. Any questions or comments on the strategic plan?
Make a motion that we approve the strategic plan draft.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have committee reports.
All right, King Philip.
Director of the research.
Oh, did you get that up? Okay.
Do you want to show us?
Put a pin in King Philip, then.
You can show us a couple of questions. Yep.
So this is a third grade, basically, this is a practice test. So you can just kind of walk along this. And anybody can access this, so that website that you guys could go on to from home.
Just can access it here? Oh, there you go.
So basically, this is an example, basically, of a reading selection that kids would have to actually read online. And then it basically says, basically, today you're going to read a story on a once-in-a-lifetime, pay close attention to the action of the characters and the events in the story, answer the questions to help you prepare to write a narrative as well. So as you can see, there is a part A question, a part B question, and then they're going to actually be going on to basically more questions. Here's an example of a drag-and-drop.
That's the technology.
Drag-and-drop into the chart, the way that Dad responds to each event during a camping trip. Not every response will be used, okay? So the students have to basically take this information, and now they need to take it and basically, they have to, with their cursor or with their mouse, they need to drag and drop those, and they also need to be prepared that they're most likely not going to use all of those that they gave them. So that's an example of a technology-enhanced question. Today, you will read the story again about once-in-a-lifetime experience, place close attention to the actions of a character and the events in the story. Answer the questions to help you prepare to write a narrative. And then it says, the question is a text-based, based essay question. You should present and develop a narrative that uses details from a passage, include correct grammar, spelling, and punctuation. This story tells about Derek's first camping trip. Write Derek's journey and drill about his camping trip. Include information about how the character responds to the events in the story as you write. And as you can see now, they have to write in this space right here, and then they also have to be able to access, basically, you know what, you know, are they going to bold? Are they going to underline? They have to capitalize. They only have actually so many words to be able to do that as well. So pretty enduring task for lots of kids. Read the article and poem about penguins. So this is something different for them. So they're going to read an article about penguins, which is a nonfiction, and then they're going to read, basically, a poem about penguins. And then they're going to take that information and have to answer questions with it. Sorry. So, and then that's the poem, and then they go and answer questions. Based on the article, which would best, would be the best heading for paragraphs one and Read the article and the poem about penguins, then answer the questions below. And as you can see, basically, they have to learn how to, basically, here is one of the articles, and then if we clicked on here, that could be the poem. Then it's the poem, so they have to know that they can go back and forth and do that. They are able to highlight information, underline information, those are some of the tools that we teach the kids. And then they answer that question. Again, this is a multiple choice, it's on, basically, vocabulary. Another writing based on my father's feet, write a paragraph to explain how the young penguin's feelings changed throughout the poem. Support your response with important details from the poem. Another passage that they need to read. More questions, multiple choice, multiple choice, multiple choice. More essay-type questions. And they answer, and I didn't answer any of them, so they're mad, that's why I have a sad face on there. So that's an example, basically, of that one. Let me see, if I can go back here. And I'm going to go to mathematics quickly. That was third grade.
So when they are writing, they can highlight stuff. They can use a tool to highlight the text while they're reading it.
You want to take it?
No. Probably fail.
So this is just six practice questions. So, this is the six practice questions. Where would you, where would a point be on the plot to show five over three on the number line? Select a space on the number line to plot the point. So, obviously, the kids have to know, you know what, that's an improper fraction. How are they actually going to turn it into a proper fraction? And then, they have to actually be able to put that right on that number line. This is a multiplication problem, and as I said, with some of the, a multiple-choice problem, as I said, the kids do have scrap paper to be able to actually work this out on their own and then go back. This is one, they just have to compute the answer, and they need to put the answer right in the box there. This is more involved question. Janet gets a sticker for every five minutes she spends on her chores each day. She puts them on a picture graph as shown. Janet spends a total of 130 minutes doing chores during the week. Complete the picture graph to show how many stickers Janet gets on Friday. So, they're going to have to basically take that star out, and they're going to have to actually drag and drop that, and they have to figure that math out as well.
I didn't hear, is this what grade?
What grade is this one?
Third grade.
Third.
This is third grade, yeah.
Available from the buyhouse.
Yeah, spends a lot of time on chores.
Spends two hours doing stars on a graph after the chores. Poor kid should sleep.
Use the more or fewer buttons as many times as needed to divide the circle into six equal parts, then shade one-sixth of the area of the circle. Divide the figure into the correct number of equal parts by using the more and fewer buttons, then shade the parts. So, I'm going to go down here and see if I can show this to you.
Pressure's on.
I know. More. They need to have six equal parts, correct? So, I'm at four. And I have six equal parts.
You've got a pictionary piece.
Now, I need to shade one of those areas.
I'll take history.
How do I do? That's, again, a technology-enhanced question, you know what, that the kids actually have to be able to do. This is a Part A and a Part B. This is drag-and-drop. This is really a lot for kids. So, Miss Shaw has a quilt that is the shape of a rectangle. Quilt is seven feet long and six feet wide, as shown. Part A, what is the perimeter in feet of Miss Shaw's quilt? Show or explain how you got your answer. Enter your answer and work and explanation in the workspace provided below, and they also have all these math symbols to be able to actually show their work and add that. And then, Part B, Mrs. Garcia also has a quilt in the shape of a rectangle. Mrs. Garcia's quilt has the same perimeter as Mrs. Shaw's, but has a different area. What could be the length and width in feet of Mrs. Garcia's quilt? Show or explain how you got your answer. Again, that would take me a little bit of time to show you right now. But that's, that's a very big, technology-enhanced, open-ended question for the kids. And that's just third grade. So, I just wanted to be able to show you.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Sorry it took so long, and thank you, Jeff, for helping me get to that.
But if you do want to look at a different grade level or sample test, they are all available on that, that website link, and they're, they're very similar to the actual test questions.
You know, using what they put out, too, as well. So, they did not release a lot of questions this year for us, too, but that's based on a new test, so. Please, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa, for coming. Lisa's had a long day, so we're going to let her.
Yes. Imagine she has had a long day. Send her an email.
Alright, well, he's playing the AV club. Why don't we go on to policy, yeah?
Alright, policy, we have two second readings. Originally, I thought these were both just incidental changes, so they should have only been done with one reading, but that's okay. So, the first one is agenda format. Nothing's changed since the first reading.
Rush the mound.
Hold up, isn't the blue new?
The blue is from the first reading.
Oh, okay.
To highlight the changes for you, and there were no changes from that.
I thought you said you changed additional ones, okay.
If everyone's all set with that one, the second one is the notification of school committee meetings. So, which, again, I thought was going to be an incidental change, but this will be the second reading, so next month, we'll do the third and final reading on both of those, we'll have a vote on those. We've also got several other policies coming forward next month that we went over today, and several of them. They're all pretty much incidental changes. A couple of them may be borderline on the incidental change, so what we're going to recommend at that point is waiving the three readings on a couple of them and voting them into being next month so that we can be, we can get them in compliance with the new state laws. So, other than that, I've got nothing else.
Alright, now, we'll go back to King Philip.
King Philip's meeting was different than the typical three- or four-hour meeting, which is always nice. It's about two and a half hours. On last Monday, December 4th, part of the discussions were on, discussion with Mr. Hardy and Mr. Kucha from MASC relative to our search. We were notified that there was an offer and acceptance last Friday of a superintendent to the Oxford Public Schools, so that expedites things.
So, she accepted the position with Oxford?
She did.
Okay. Do you know what the start date on that is?
I don't. That's some of the information I'm waiting for, because she was in, still in process of negotiations, but she's already told us that she will accept. And see, outside of that, I think the only other thing that we, of any real discussion was rest, relative to district goals, or discussions relative to several different district goals that we were discussing with some revisions. Next meeting, we'll basically have some final compilation of information that we discussed at the meeting. Other than that, there was just the update of the website, and that's it.
Okay.
So, Jeff, just a question, they had, so, if it's, I'm assuming the start date is not a July 1, that it's probably an immediate opening, is that? Or you're not, not sure?
I have no information to provide, because all we had was an email from her on last Friday.
Okay.
In the afternoon, saying, just wanted to let you know that I've been offered and accepted a position, we're in the process of finalizing negotiations.
Okay. So, would that change, or I assume at the next meeting, they'll discuss what they'll do for the remainder of this year, because we just got the search materials for MASC, but I believe that was with the intent of a July 1, so they'd be discussing an interim position, I would assume?
Correct.
Could it still be July 1, though? Would they, would Oxford set something up?
No, I think it's.
That's way far, right? That would happen?
Yeah, I think that they're hiring for an immediate position. I'm not positive. I know the other one was like a.
So, they may have had an interim one right now, and they're, okay.
Or somebody leaving.
I'd like to provide more definitive information.
Yeah.
Got basic information, that's based on information she's providing.
Right.
And she did use MASC for it, so.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know if, if they, knowing that she was searching, if they had a plan in place for an immediate, for the short term, until you can procure another.
I wish I had an answer for that, unfortunately, I probably won't have one until.
Next meeting.
End of this week, possibly.
Okay.
But again, it depends on information that we've gathered. We had our last meeting Monday, we won't meet again for, you know, next till next Monday.
Alright.
Who are the recipients of this?
All the superintendents, current sitting superintendents received that, so I gave you my copy, because I just received that in the mail.
What is that?
The advertisement for the KP superintendent.
Oh, okay.
And the brochure that they put out from MASC. So, I just brought it in case anyone wanted to see it.
Our last meeting, there was a, sorry, Paul, go ahead.
No, you got it.
Thank you. Our last request, our last meeting, there was a request made that you had sent an inquiry to the KP administration and never got a response relative to one of the site surveys?
No, I had reached out to King Philip and invited them to participate on the space study committee.
Space study, I apologize.
Yes.
Was there anyone that responded, because at our last meeting?
The response that I received was that they currently have many working subgroups, school climate and budget, and they didn't have anybody available, and so I told them that I would send the information that we received up to the central office.
Okay.
But they, they said that all of their administrators currently are serving on several of the community subgroups, and they just didn't have anybody.
At the last meeting, I made a note to the members that there was a lack of information, or communication to our board, and that we'd request to have information, and you were copied on an email sent to the chairman.
Yep, yep, and I did send him a copy of the information that we have, the space study.
Okay.
Paul, what was your question?
So, all recipients were current superintendents in this area, or statewide?
I, I don't know, I mean, I think generally, MASC, anytime they run a search, I get the mailings, so I assume they send them out to all the mass state superintendents. I don't know who else, in addition to that, gets that, but.
The search is natural, national, Paul.
National?
Yeah.
But not principals?
I don't know that, I don't know, I'd have to check on that. I don't know if, I just know because I receive them, I don't know if they send to principals or assistant, I don't, I'm not sure who they, who they market the materials to.
Okay.
But I'll find out, if you want, for the next meeting.
Who cares?
Yeah, I'm not sure who they, who they send the mails to.
Is that it on that? Alright, budget?
Budget, no update, we're having our first meeting later tonight.
Got some more money, so, get good stuff out of it. Okay, never mind.
Alright, alright, moving on, we have a school partner renewal for the NTA. Probably the biggest no-brainer vote of all time, but we'll go ahead and do that one. We have a motion to renew the partnership of the Norfolk Teachers Association.
I make a motion that we approve the Norfolk Teachers Association school partner.
Second, assuming no further discussion, everyone in favor? Aye. Okay, very good. Also, another one that probably, not much going on here, NCL, North Community League, all their various things, they are looking to renew, so we have a motion to renew their partnership.
I make a motion that we approve the NCL school partners.
Okay, second. Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, lastly, we have a vote on the school committee meeting minutes of November 21st, I think everyone except Jeff Curry, Jeff, you weren't here to that last one, correct? Okay, so there's four of us voting on that one. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read through that, but do we have a motion to accept the meetings from November 21st?
I make a motion that we approve the meetings, minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And let's see, we're looking at January 9th for our next meeting, is that working for everybody? Yes.
I'll get some mic.
Except for Pam, it works for everyone, so we'll move forward despite that.
Weren't you the guy who just forgot to show up two months ago?
No.
I didn't believe you were.
Alright, so all in favor of stopping to publicly chastise the law? Alright, so we need to, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to need, we'll need a vote on that, and then we're going to need a separate vote to move to go into executive session to comply with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of an individual not to reconvene in open session. That does need to be a voice vote, so everyone have to give their names on that one. So, first, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Alright, very good. Alright, so then, roll call vote to move into executive session. A motion on that, and then a second, and then roll call vote.
I make, okay, I make a motion that we move into executive session.
We don't have to read it again.
Okay.
We have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, so, roll call vote. Actually, state your name, okay.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle. Alright, meeting is adjourned, thank you.